And ask that will be called please.
Blue.
Here.
Disharum.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Folshauser.
Here.
Humble's.
Hi, here.
Wagenbach.
Here.
With stuff.
Here.
I'd like to ask everyone to stand please for the legislative items.
I.
We're the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Carrie, Carrie, did we get the camera going?
The board will now move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Superintendent's report, Dr. Dearman will begin.
We have some students' staff recognitions. We would like to start with Mr. Adrian introducing science teacher Ken Baker.
Okay, I have, I have Harry Zaw in front of me, Felix in front of me, we're waiting for one of them. I want to introduce you to, Harry Zaw is our, my IPA student representative, student of the year for us. Harry is a graduate, recent graduate, graduated Saturday. Harry, we're trying to get him to the Caltech University, believe it or not, this man is on Waylon University, I'm going to be looking at here, he got 36, I believe he has 1,500 on the med society. He's also the president and founder of our flight club, oh Zoe Branson, who started way here, goes over here. But they can be, uh, stop me here and come and start a flight club in New Orleans, I think, last year was amazing, it was weather moved, uh, weather had a whole different air, there were blocks, it's different, uh, the stadium on, and it was over by Daniel, uh, something in the border, uh, took a fall of damage in that, and we won that this year. Uh, the club is really strong right now, it's very active, uh, just rank up the box with that. But Harry Rock, he's also a hockey player, and I'm a football hockey player, he's been very well out in the field. Uh, he played at the Fox Forest too, so Harry was our IPA student representative along the road. Zoe also came to the flight school, uh, and I thought that very long, but he's there now, he's here, he's there now, he's here. So two of our presidents in the game, they are first and second presidents with the leadership and the style. So nice job to Harry and Zoe Walker, who are around, but, Harry Zaw, good man. I know this is great, uh, Felix, Felix is probably one of the most spectacular things I've ever heard in a high school. Uh, he was honored and earned the right to perform a solo with the Peoria Symphony on a show. So when I went there, you know, typical high school principal expecting a 30 second, a 60 second solo. Dr. Dearman and I were both in attendance, I think we were both shocked at the, the class that you were playing. It was a full six or seven minutes that you were there doing your thing. And he was accompanied by the whole Peoria Symphony, who did, uh, did a little track down too. But Felix was right here with, again, one of the most spectacular things I've ever heard about my students do. Uh, and Felix is going to the University of Kansas State of Missouri, or just Missouri State, and then three guys over there. School, that's, but school, and then three guys over there. He'll do a wonderful job there, again, if you've ever seen our class, we have not just the quantity of, of players, but the quality as well, too, and Felix is one of the most meaningful people to work for, and, again, one of the most spectacular things I've seen as a high school principal, and not only every day, it's not a new before, or, uh, tracking, so that's something he did on, has all lots of hours of practice and, uh, wonderful job, Felix.
Thank you, Mr. Adrian. A couple of other announcements that I have in my superintendent report. Uh, we were recently informed, and it was published in the paper, that we have successfully, successfully been awarded the Safe Route to School Grant from the Illinois Department of Transportation. That was a joint venture between the Village, the Dunlap School District, and IDOT to get that application slammed through at the midnight hour, uh, and basically it's at Dunlap Valley middle where they cross to Copperfield. As we all know, it's kind of a blind corner hill, it's not the best place for kids to be crossing. Uh, the Village has done some work already with some striping and some signage, but now we've got this grant for $200,000 that's going to allow us to do additional work there in conjunction with the Village and IDOT, put a median in there, and then have a pathway leading from where they cross right on top of the hill all the way down to the school so they don't have to walk through the grass and the mud or the snow and the ice, uh, once that's done. I'd like to tip my hat to, uh, Mr. Jason Holmes. Uh, I'm not going to take credit for his work, that was probably 90% Jason Holmes, so thank you, Mr. Holmes, and congratulations. Uh, another acknowledgement, uh, as Mr. Adrian stated, we had high school graduation on Saturday, and this is my first go around with the Dunlap graduation, it's held at the Bradley Renaissance Center, and congratulations to, uh, Mr. Adrian on a job well done in getting that organized. It's a big endeavor, it went off really well, I thought it was really nice for the kids and very much appreciated by all the parents. And Zoe, you just walked in, didn't you? Wave Zoe Brand, Zoe is the other student that Mr. Adrian was referring to.
I just want to say something about Zoe. Zoe, come up here, you deserve it. Okay, so Zoe played, like I was playing earlier, look at the smile on her face. I mean, Zoe, come up here, look at the, Zoe's one of those special people, she did, uh, not only her work at the flight club, I talked about the board, but her work at the VODS, uh, club is, is second to none. She is in there, and her body's pretty healthy, but it's not only a male-oriented group, and Zoe can tell her all from the beginning, she's a leader in managing work here, and, uh, obviously a very high-end teacher, she didn't want to be, you know, her company, correct? They were staying here, and she's not very much, and the size of her, we've got all the people, all that, she's a little more than, you know, we're going to celebrate her, and everybody, so we're going to really celebrate her, and everybody loves her.
And that completes my superintendent report.
Thank you, Dr. Dearman. At this time, we'll move on to the public comments. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, very good. Could you please come forward? Actually, if, if there are several people that like to, would like to speak on the same topic, uh, we would like to ask that you come up together and possibly appoint a spokesperson if there are more than four or five of you. If not, if not, please sign in with charity, she's sitting right here, and, uh, before you do speak, we have to read this, uh, portion of our agenda that addresses public comments. Before addressing the board, I would like to remind you of our process. Per Board Policy 2.230, we ask that when addressing the board, please identify yourself and be brief. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. The speaker is asked to please conduct oneself with respect and civility towards others. Individuals less than 18 years of age are permitted to address the board if accompanied by his or her parent or guardian. The board typically does not engage in two-way conversations during the public portion of the meeting. Any follow-up response will be addressed by the administration at a later date. To be respectful of others and to protect confidentiality, complaints against individual students, staff, members, or board members, either named or unnamed, shall not be orally presented to the Board of Education. Such complaints should be put in writing, signed by the person or persons making the charges, and delivered to the Board of Education Secretary. At this time, I would like to ask anyone who wishes to address the board to please come forward and sign the public participation sheet with charity. Then each speaker may come to the podium and begin speaking into the microphone by stating their name and the topic they will be addressing. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm in the ninth school, I love the first school, the reason I have a first school is because of it. It's, it has been all created by, you know, it's been so, it's actually a good, it's a good, that's why I'm here, and I'm listening to the first school.
Hello, good evening, uh, my name's Eric Cooper, um, I'm the current head coach of the Dunlap Area Kids Wrestling Program. Uh, I've been involved with this program for the last eight years. Um, when I started, it was really a children's hockey-based program. Um, I've seen how I've done my president, some kids have done my president, so there's kind of been a transition during the eight years. Uh, when I started, there was, I believe, three or four Dunlap kids involved already in the program. Um, and really the last three or four years, um, we've really been pushing the kids with the numbers, and we've, uh, I think, I think you guys have information already, I want to say it's high twenties, low thirties, that number does push it a little bit, um, so the government's seen some success with advanced math programs, and drumming. Um, I believe we have continued success with the live program, where those kids know there is a next level, if that is the way that it goes, and I think it could be a Peter program back and forth, um, with us developing young athletes, and already have a good level of, of fundamentals when they get to that next level, um, definitely be a, a good thing. Um, another thing I just want to mention before I go too far toward is I just want to thank some people here tonight that have put a lot of work into just getting to this point, um, and to thank Paula Lozak, who's put a lot of time into it. Um, Katie Cassid, who's definitely been involved in giving the data, and highlighting it, and getting the folks done. Wesley Fuller has also helped out in that fashion. Um, I also want to thank the parents and young wrestlers that we have tonight here, um, they've done a great job with wrestling and getting involved in recruiting their friends and, you know, teammates, um, and I also want to thank the school for, uh, getting this on the agenda and taking, taking for their best. Uh, actually, some of them have been involved with wrestling for, for a while, um, you know, the, the, the high school program that started, um, there's definitely been a few years of growing there and starting a new program, um, going against teams with this existing program will be a little bit of a challenge, um, but I think it'll be a good challenge, and I think it'll give, um, kids, especially in one month, another option, opportunity to participate in activities, um, and kind of get their, wrestling is, is, there's, there's kind of a, a spot wherever you're interested. It's no cuts for usually, you have a variety of grade classes, all of them normal system, 285, um, you know, girls can participate as well, or some permanent girls participating in other, um, conference schools, um, so I think it's just another great opportunity for, for the student body to get involved with. Um, so I'm really excited about it, um, I would see, uh, I think there's some other people here besides I was above, um, so with that, I was going to say thank you, I was going to say thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore.
Hello, my name's Naomi Monta, I'm part of the community here at Dunlap High School. I've been wrestling almost six years now, and they didn't even notice I was in the local high school system. I'm currently in seventh grade, I realized that Dunlap High School did not have wrestling, so I joined the local club wrestling. I wrestled with the club team for a few years, and I'm now still under practices to learn how to play. I really enjoy all the time I spend wrestling in the main event team, and through this experience, I gained a handful of core wrestling. As of now, I'm a resident of the local national team, and I'm a regular in the girls' wrestling. Some of my achievements, as I've made it to accomplish a few years, are all varying status, national blazer, six-time, six-time girl state blazer, involved by the local national team. Most recently, I made it, I competed girl state in place seven. And this will likely lead me to enter the national team to participate in the largest national competition in schools throughout the year. Only the wrestling I've made it to achieve these accomplishments means some of my narrowest aspirations in the less of this now. Every year, I, I have goals, I set them myself in the wrestling. One of the major goals I look to change here is to be a resident's athlete, so I will need to pursue my wrestling career at college. I feel that Dunlap High School wrestling team is something that I have accomplished in this school. Every wrestling season, I see articles being written about other local, global wrestlers, and thus getting them in my exposure to their native propologies in South Carolina. Not only do I lack case, but I'm even into potentially getting a college scholarship, I miss out on practices and matches that help the girls in academy to get better at wrestling. With the normal wrestling season, I get around to having matches, while other wrestlers are just getting over double D on my own. Wrestling is also extremely big in Illinois. My freshman year, the Illinois National Team placed third in finals, while Boise did fifth in first place. The reason Illinois sees so much success in wrestling starts in schools. Every grown boy, um, in the national team has a wrestling team. While I have to make my own training schedule, find a place to train, maybe travel around the nation to gain exposure and experience, and times good for myself. I also have been very lucky to have found a team which is the best sport in the country. Being the only middle-class school in our wrestling, I feel that Dunlap would greatly benefit from our wrestling team. Every year, the number of participants in wrestling rises, and Dunlap can always say, hey. Participation in wrestling in Illinois is extremely high, and I am wrestling team would benefit the students who are looking for more sport, those who are looking to find sport outside of other sports leagues, and the wrestling community in the middle of the world. I'm very excited that Dunlap will be wrestling team next year, as I know of older and many other students who support wrestling and will greatly help me accomplish my goals. Given the level we'll be able to be part of the team for here, and with the girls' academy and other sports that are driving it up, thank you for allowing us to meet tonight and meet the opportunity to share the benefits of wrestling in our town.
Good evening, I'm in the district of New York, and I'm a wrestling mom, and I know I might say that, but I'm a, a dear wrestling mom, and I've been working on a lot of wrestling things, wrestling community, especially many different houses, uh, that brings our teams and our kids together, and I watch my kids grow up in wrestling school, and has taught many different things, um, that have really helped with their character, it's helped with their determination, it's helped with their training, um, we've been to, uh, our football over there, and, uh, I've watched a whole lot of wrestling, because they're, you know, they stay in Dunlap school or they go to another city, or they go to another school. And I'm, my goal is that I want to bring this sport to Dunlap and make sure that it's supported and nurtured in probably just as we have in Dunlap, uh, this sport for the last eight years, and I watch all the events that happen from wrestling, over in wrestling stadiums, that's what the community is, um, and watch all the evidence with other children having that happen in the city. Thank you.
Good evening.
Um, I'm Avery Summerson, and I'm in the district of Swinging Heights, uh, I saw this weekend with the Dunlap Dolphins football club. Um, I represent, um, just as a refraction, people who are asking, and also representing the thirty plus people here seeing that I have concerns about the success of this new school, uh, this school. I want to extend our appreciation to the board and Dr. Dearman for at least looking at the emergency repairs that they need to be done, so we have a safer location for our first owners to spare. Um, I also want to take the opportunity to clarify the social media as well as the letters that have been sent to the board in behalf of just showing how much the community does for this school. Um, our intent is not necessarily to get the community to be interested, I understand the financials, but in general, um, in today's Dunlap, I think, we should, I understand, we understand that the decisions that have to be made in the expenses exceed the regulations coming into the district. However, we also believe that there should be a location that can be sustainable for a school that's been here this school for a long time, outside of the club needs, which we are definitely blessed to do, to use the facilities within the district, and how we feel, um, that high school can be successful, and it's the evidence on the law and interpreting this. But how can we handle this situation that's relying, one that isn't broken down every season, at least every season, one that offers clean air, and one that offers, um, a temperature-controlled air, and that's really what we're looking for in programs, we can be carried out, we can be reached, and we want them to be ready to participate in this sort of task force, and as mentioned, correspondings with the word, um, as well as, um, we've had a promise, um, a lot of future for the future. Thank you.
This concludes the public participation portion of the meeting. The board will now move on to the information discussion items. The next agenda item is board discussion regarding options for the swimming pool. Dr. Dearman will begin the discussion.
All right, my slide's up there. Uh, I'm here to skip some. Is it the senior? Okay. Uh, to give you some financial information, I have some questions that the board, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Humble's, uh, and the rest of the board, but Dr. Humble's burger, I think the board should book this on the agenda and move forward with it, I'll leave with the real books for, you know, my business here. Uh, my position, this is my first year here, same with Mr. Hackett, Assistant Superintendent, um, I would call a little off, because one of the first comments made to me by a, you know, my president, who was a friend of mine, and told her this school was the love of the pool, and I have no idea what the paper already talked about. Um, this has been discussed many times before, uh, I found some power once in March 2016, and so I, and I applaud the board for having encouraged this, uh, we have three new areas, um, and they've been on a very challenging topic for creating, so who knows with that. Uh, with that being said, let me get some brief information. As you can see on the slide behind me, that is our EAD history. Um, the numbers started 2013, and from your left to right, um, they go to 2018, that's where you see the first real gap. Those numbers are all hard factual bill numbers, straight off the tax calculation table. So those ones, great, far from reports, and then after that, I was asking, you can give me your projections, okay, what's it look like? I am not on my actual hands, I do not have a first book. Uh, we've all, all four attorneys have this office, and asked them to give us a projection, they were hesitant to give us anything, um, because it's somewhat of an unknown. But their projection was a three percent drop again, roughly, and then flat, flat, as far as EAD growth, uh, the following two years. It makes sense, I mean, we live in this community, the dear decision, we felt that, to, that, we're still feeling it. So, you know, if something like that were happening, and I'm sure we feel it again, we can preview the future, um, or what's coming, or waiting, you know, state level, uh, federal level, who knows? So these are projections based on, uh, information provided to me by the Peoria County Census Office. Uh, another thing that's been talked about with Governor Pritzker is, uh, PTE, that's Tax Tax, Promoting Tax Extension Limitation Law, the actual, full extension of the Act nine nine. Basically, what that means is that as a district, the money you receive the year before, the next year, you can't receive less, you will get that same amount, plus either CDI or five percent, CDI is super pricing, that's the lesser of the two. Now, that will go into that through his plan, I believe, for cash year 2022, that is the proposal. That will be after we flatten out, as you can see in this graph. However, that had been in place prior to, you know, I didn't put the numbers on there, but if you look at 2013 to 2014, uh, the district's EAD grew by 3.23 percent, CDI at that time was 1.6. So even though the district grew by over three percent, they would have only received 1.6, because under the law, that's only a lot. Uh, the next year, we grew by 3.84, CDI was .1. The next year after that, the district grew by 5.59, we would have only received 1.3, because that is CDI in that. The next year, we were just a little bit, we're getting to the top of the peak now, that was 1.39, CDI was 2.1. And then the next year after that, we saw our first dip, that's this year's current, uh, we fell from 929, got 900, that's a drop of 3.06 percent, uh, CDI is only 2.2 percent. And then after that, you know, those are the projections, we're projecting to drop by three percent again, and then go flat after that. So those are the numbers, and obviously we can't forecast the future, we don't know what it is. The takeaway from this is, unfortunately, we're in an economy right around our area, where we're seeing a decline in EAD. Uh, hopefully, it will, since the stock subsides out and flat out, potentially grow. Um, my concern is if we get to the proper tax extension limitation law, and we see some of the growth, like we had seen in previous years, we may, may not be able to capture the dollars that are associated with that growth. We'll see, that's beyond our control, that's not our decision, connected in fact to our bottom line of the board. Um, here's a rough, this is a, so I am saying this, um, revenue, past, present, predicted. Um, this isn't a real good graphic to go off of, so that's a kind of a rough idea, but skip to the next slide, I think it's a better visual. Let me give some extra information, if one of this does or does not represent. Um, the first three sets of numbers going from your left to right are straight off of our annual financial report created by the board, which is accounting for, were required to have done yearly by law. They've published that it's publicly available, so those numbers are very recent. The rest are budgeted numbers. And when I say budgeted numbers, you create your budget, start creating in June, July, it's put on display in August, and then down in September, and you're predicting you're going to spend the entire year. It's a guess, it's a very educated guess, but it is just a guess at that. Uh, we are a cash-based accounting practice, in that if money comes in in June, it goes on June's books. If money comes in and goes out in July, it goes on the next year's books, or June, or July 1st to June 30th. State of Illinois has been notorious for late payments, so we'll get payments from the previous year in July, they've got to go on the next year's books. Uh, this year, Mr. Hackett, I came in, if you look at the graphic, you see a dip there at 17, 18, at 36. The blue line is expense, and then, uh, red line is revenue. If you look at that blue line, that's a bit of an anomaly, because of the fact, there was some expenses that were held off. First of all, we had some transition, meaning that we had a new superintendent, or interim superintendent last year, as well as another guy. So in reality, that 36 should be bumped up a little bit, and then the 41 for this current year is probably a little bit high. We haven't been here in June, so we're kind of, some of the easy expenses, we know what to make, so we can do that. But you know, we're starting air conditioning soon, as you probably noticed when we came in. We can have an air conditioner right now, and that's not an expense that's budgeted for. That's something that will be reflected in those results. But if you look at that and bump that line up a little bit, the other one down, you see almost a flat line growth. So what I did is just put, you know, a linear regression model, what is the kind of average out to over the years? It's about three and a half percent. Some years were more, some years were less, and this goes back for ten years. So when you see the predicted numbers going forwards, that's the blue line? That's based on a budget that hasn't been realized. Pardon me. And then based off the fact that, you know, we're going to continue to spend, you know, at that usual rate, it's been higher than the previous. And then the red line that you see is the revenue rate, there's lots of things that aren't out in there. The construction money comes in, new construction, like new homes are being built, I didn't factor those in, there's no doing for that. If there's anything coming off of a tear, some extended extensions, evidence-based funding, we're refunding some bonds, some district refunds in 2019, allocation bonds come January of this year, we're going to refund our Phil Americ bonds, that's going to save us about $750,000. That's not reflective of you because it hasn't happened yet, but it's going to. When you look at these numbers, this is absolute worst case scenario. Do I think this is going to come to fruition? Absolutely not, I do not. But this is worst case scenario. Here's the takeaway, before we hit the panic button, the sky is not falling, we're not die or straight. But we are in a situation where we have to find EAV. That is weird. That is happening. And expenses do go up year to year. So as the board wants to move forward, make the decisions, there's some things they need to consider. So then we have long-term planning and a rice cutter now. No danger of going to do it home. When money gets tight, what do you do? Or you kind of look at your expenses and start scrutinizing every expense and any type of wealth. And I'm sure we'll do the same. Thanks a lot. Just a few other things to toss around, you know, we need to consider as an overall plan. Pension cost shift has been talked about in state government for years, it's being talked about again. What that is, is the teachers' retirement system. The teachers pay a portion, the state is supposed to pay a portion. The teacher's proportion is 90%. This was established in 1939. Every single year since 1939, the teachers have paid their share. It comes out of their check automatically, 100% membership. The state has been there outgaging Walts since 1930. And that was here in 1939. They continually robbed from that fund, and it's in bad shape now, as you will from now until you get that. So then, the state wants out of the pension game now. So there's been talk of just put it back, put it back on the district, you know, so their pension can be down a little bit, you know, the end of the year, that's a good. If that were to happen, if that portion of the state's required payment in the TRS was to be put on the district, in one year alone, that would be 1.543 million dollars to us if they made their share. I know there's been discussions, you know, will they give the school's authority the ready for? I don't know, that's not my decision. But those are real numbers, and that's based on certain salaries. If that would happen, that's what we're looking at now. Some other things we can consider to get to overall, exit buildings? While we wait, yeah. They're in good shape now, there's nothing wrong with those bridges, but they're not doing fine forever. And we look at our projected growth, decision inside, we look at very carefully when we look at the middle schools. We're predicted to grow again. We're about 4,400 students now, and in six years, everybody reports that we can build some 5,000. All right, that's kind of spread out pretty good. Where are we going to put those kids? Are we going to add on? Are we going to build new schools? But those are all discussions that we had when we get to that point, but those are the things we need to discuss in there. The district office, where I am located, is behind Sam's on the shelf. We rent that space and have been renting it for eight years. Our current rent, $7,000 a month. Now, if the district office had been built, when that earth was started, we would have a building that is not being paid for, we would have an asset not allowed to build. That's a discussion that's been had as well, something to consider. I know this has happened, we're working with the athletic leadership team, they are representing next month, some of the things they're looking at, track resurfacing, my kids are on track, I've been on the track, it's in decent shape now, but it's not going to last forever, it's going to be a resurfacing, various in a couple of years. Same thing with the football field turf, I had that tested earlier this year, it's holding up very well, but it's starting to show with age as well, that's going to be something that needs to be addressed. And then the athletic leadership team, I believe was looking at, they were advertising potentially a field house, something along those lines. So there are lots of needs that are going to come forward. Next slide, I'll just buzz through this real quick because I've already gone through this one for previous board meetings. If you do mention wage law, it's on the books, and I've got it going out to 24, 25 because that's the rule of law, it's raising the wage to $15,000. You know, I was asked, what does that mean to the district as far as dollars? And what that means is if we're to increase those that currently are not meeting minimum wage, which is no one right now, but as that wage continuing increases and gets closer to $15,000, how does it impact our outline? If we just take those that aren't at the minimum wage requirement as its stair steps up and bump them to that level and freeze everyone else? So no one else gets a raise for five years, that's the least it would cost us in that balance. Next slide. The problem is, we've got some people that have been working here in different capacities, whether you're a youth or a custodian. You know, I've been here for, you know, 12 years and I'm making $15,000 maybe since, you know, I started that 10 and 11 ballot, I've gotten my raises, I'm at $15,800. If you get to the end of this, if the minimum wage is $15,000, you've got people that have been here for 15 years, they're making $15,000 an hour, and then suddenly comes a bright hand street with no experience of making $15,000. You know, that's not going to sit well, and likely so. So if we keep the spread of the salaries the same, what does that look like? And you can read the numbers for yourself, it's almost $5,000 if you try and keep that spread the same as far as percentage between our lowest wager and the highest wager. Next slide. The next one is if we increase those that are below the minimum as its stair steps up and get, you know, modest rates of 3% over the years, what does that look like? And you can see it, it's roughly $140 million. And then the last slide that I have is on substitutes. We have substitutes that are very difficult to ask, and I'm not talking substitute teachers, I'm talking substitute custodians, go to bus drivers, the minimum wage applies to them as well, what does that look like for us as far as dollars? And you can see that as well. So with that information you provided, I see four options as far as the swimming pool. And we have to consider about options, you can say, some are going to like the option, some are not. One option, we build a brand new facility, and there'll be other questions to go with that. Would we do an athletic field house with it? Would the district office please be able? All of ours wants one. I leave, that's a decision the board will have to make. Do we want a 25 meter pool or 15 meter? Do we want a six, eight, or 10 meter? I mean, there's a million different questions. There'll be information that we need to gather to make an informed decision on that. That's option one, we can build a new pool. Option two, we're done this one, we don't do anything. We fill in the pool and we're done. Nobody likes that option, but it is an option. Option three, take what we have and upgrade it. Reverb is very, words you want to use in that. And from the comments that were made earlier, I think that's an option people are open to. But then that is the question of what does upgrading mean to Scott Gary? What does upgrading mean to Ann Henry? What does upgrading mean to Dr. Humbles? Don't know. And that's a matter of perspective. So, you know, is that just a total panic? Or is that a filtration? Are we, is it allowed by the people, so are the terms that's embedded? There's a lot of questions to go with that, and we need to gather that data. I know some of that work has never been done, but how recent is it? The fourth option, this is outside, I think they want to partner with us to go in on pool. I'm not saying that's a viable option, I don't know anyone that, but certain options at the end of the day. So with the information that I've provided, my request to the board is which option or options do you want me to pursue? And then what information do you need to gather for you to make the informed decision on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dearman. I must say that, you know, we do have four options we need to consider. I know all of us, whether we were campaigning or dealing with people in our community, the pool has been an issue for many, many years. It's the same pool I swam in 40 some years ago. And so we need to give the community some answers, and, and I think everyone on this board feels that way. So it's my feeling that we should probably appoint a committee, having two members from the board, a member from Dunlap Dolphins, a member from our swim team, as well as some administration. I'd like to go ahead and open it up for discussion from the other board members. If we were to appoint a committee though, I would like to ask that if a board member is interested in serving on that committee, to please email me by the end of Friday, and then I would like to work with Dr. Dearman in selecting the volunteers or the people he would like to ask help with administration as well as a representative of the marines club. Would anyone else like to address this topic or have any questions at this time?
Just have one question, right off the bat. One of the things I'm wondering about is, should we have a committee just look at the pool options? Or should the board have a discussion first of, you know, if we're going to spend a big chunk of money that's not for operating expenses, should we look at the condition of wilder weight in DGS? Should we look at the amount of debt we have and do we pay down some of our debt? Should we look at other big expenses or areas where we could put a chunk of money? Or the other, the other thing I think we need to look at is, should we stow that money away? We don't know what's going to happen in the future. The last time we had a dip in our local economy, it was caused by, I believe, the national economy. Caterpillar laid off a bunch of people, but the recovery was really quick, and those positions came back. This time, those positions are gone, and they're probably not going to come back. And so we may have a permanent adjustment, you know, in our EAV, and so do we need to make sure that we hold that money in case in future years we would need to dip into it for just, you know, just to pay salary and not to have to cut programs? And so the concern I have of immediately appointing a committee to look at pool options, I'm wondering if we first need to look at the broader issue of, you know, our overall finances and what are our priorities? Is it wilder weight, a pool, paying off our debt, or keeping money that we might need for reserves in the future?
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else have comments they would like to make? Anyone interested in perhaps a committee of a larger focus with a 20-year plan, prediction plan, or, I mean, the pool is currently not working, correct? Have we ordered the parts for the pool so we can get the pool back up and running?
The pool will be up and running.
Will be up and running. Anyone else have anything to say about possibly having a committee?
Oh, here's a. Let me go. Mike?
I didn't want to jump right in. Can you hear me? Yeah, I really appreciate that this is on the agenda because it's a critical issue. And, you know, we've made do budget constraints and, you know, Band-Aids as people have said, and that's very, very true. It's something that needs to be addressed, and, but it's a big capital expenditure unless we continue to do Band-Aids. The committee idea is, is a good one. I think that's something that we should consider. I think though, at this point, we, we really need critical information because we just don't know what we're looking at. To ask the board at this point to narrow down the options, I don't think is maybe the most pragmatic way to go because I just don't think we have the facts and data. You mentioned four options, and so that's good to know, and, you know, what the district administration is considering to have us look at. But we don't have any costs and we don't have any history. We have some old assessments that have been done in 14 and 16. We don't have the information on what the repairs have been since that time, how they've held up and the associated costs, and if those are sufficient to keep the pool viable on those issues. And then what the costs would be between, you know, I guess there's three options here because snow swimming would just be too, I guess there's a cost to, to fill in the pool. But I think until we have those facts and data presented to us and that the administration provides that to us, whether you do it individually, I'm not sure who did the 16 condition assessment, the email that we got from a board member, if that was done internally, you know, maybe with the director of operations or if it was an outside firm. The 2014 Barnesworth is clearly an outside expert that provided information, but we're not sure what was implemented from there and how, you know, what our options are cost-wise. And it was good to see some numbers and some tentative projections on where we're going, where we're heading, but I think before we can make a decision, we need to know what those are so that we get that guidance and maybe you guys provide a timeline on when different pieces of information can be brought to us and we can analyze it and discuss it in a meaningful way and provide touchpoints to, to the board. Get that information, you know, at, at the higher level for us and then have the committee formed and have a really deep discussion with the stakeholders that are very interested. But I think we're just at such a preliminary point for such a high capital cost that, I know we're in critical condition mode right now, but if we can get it up and running to serve the short term and hopefully the last Band-Aid, we can make the right decision for the school district long-term. That's my, I guess, 10 cents worth, that was really long, I apologize.
Thank you, Cheryl. I think what I was envisioning is having that committee with, with also the help of Dr. Dearman, look at the various options. I'm not asking them to make a final decision or a recommendation even, I think just a fact-finding type committee so we can have some real, real dollars in an updated assessment. I don't think that anyone on this board is ready to make a decision on any one of those options until we see some really good, concrete numbers.
And to get detailed financial information, I've received numerous questions on that. You know, when Gorance comes in for our audit, they bring a team of six people that work eight hours a day for two weeks to do a single-year audit. If you're wanting detailed financial projections, both in reverse for previous years and then current and then predicted future, that's not something that can be done in a week. That's going to take some time. It will get done, that's something that really goes hand in hand with the budget process, which is Mr. Hackett's responsibility, and he's getting ready to dive right in, we're right in, start of budget season, so it would go hand in hand with that. But if you're wanting that information back by the June meeting and you want it accurate, I can't make that promise. You know, the other concern that I have is, you know, we're talking about critical information and different costs. It wouldn't be bad, in my opinion, to get a committee together now, especially with some people that maybe have a better working knowledge of the pool and the pool industry. Just to get some rough ideas of, if you want to replace the filtration system, what does that cost? What does it entail? If you want to, you know, I've heard different things about the drain- and different costs. It wouldn't be bad, in my opinion, to get a committee together now, especially with some people that maybe have a better working knowledge of the pool and the pool industry. Just to get some rough ideas of, if you want to replace the filtration system, what does that cost? What does it entail? If you want to, you know, I've heard different things about the drains not working and just some of those big-picture costs and the ceiling and some of the rust that's on the support structures or those structurally sound, and start having some people come in and look at that. I'd like to have some other people in with me to start gathering that critical information that you speak of. A committee will be helpful, you know, the more hands, the better, to spread some of that work out. And we have some people I know sitting on this board that are very knowledgeable with that, that I could use their help if they were part of the committee. So I agree, I don't, we won't want to make a long-term decision without thinking it through, but there's a lot of work to be done and I could use some help from knowledgeable individuals to get that done.
Thank you, Teresa.
Yes, just want to make a comment too.
I don't think it's on.
It's not on, is it? It isn't?
Yeah.
I'll try to speak. It doesn't sound like, can you hear me?
If you speak right into it.
Thank you, Cheryl, for, now I can hear myself, for what you said. I completely agree. I do believe, and I know I've talked to Dr. Dearman about this too, I haven't, it's not been forty years for me, Abby, I don't think, in the pool, but maybe it has, I won't say. But it's something we have to look at. I think we have to, I think it has to be a priority. And I do agree with Karen, I think two committees need to be formed. I think we need to look at one and, and I was looking at Tom, I see Tom out there. I believe we do have a comprehensive plan out there for our building, so we'll know what needs to be done there as far as priority. But, and I've had this conversation with Dr. Dearman, when I, when I look at the chart here and the expenses and revenues, I think we have to, and I know that's worst-case, thank you for, for indicating that. But I think we need to take a very close look, see how the numbers are coming in, see exactly where we're going to be and try to get those projections as close as we can to see where we're at. But I think a committee needs to be formed and I think aggressive dates, aggressive goals need to be on there because I know this pool has been out there for years. I think we need to come up with options. We need facts, we need data, exactly where we're at, where we could go and, and to understand exactly what's out there. So my recommendation is the same, to have a committee, but I think maybe, Karen, one for each. I don't think that's just one whole committee. I think we need to have those and, and what I would like to see is an aggressive schedule for that to get that data together. Now, I don't know how quickly we can do that, Scott, and I know you, that's a, that's a big task, it's a project. So I just want to, rather than let this linger on, get to where we need to be with the pool.
Mr. Wissam, do you have anything to share?
Well, I didn't, but I will. Can you hear me out there? I really made no bones about it when I was campaigning for the job that I've been on the Athletic Leadership Committee for three years and, and our primary goal here.
I don't know what's happening.
It could be them.
Can you hear me? I don't need that.
He's going to turn it off.
It's just humming.
He's got it. I believe strongly that extracurricular activities of all types, including athletics, are really critical to developing a whole person in addition to the academics. And I think we've done some great things on the Athletic Leadership Team. We helped usher in lacrosse and I'm hoping tonight we'll help usher in wrestling. We've got a fabulous swimming program. Of the options, I'd hate to see number two happen. I don't, I don't, I think we can hopefully avoid that. Number one, seeing the numbers up there, they, they scare me tremendously. One of the things I heard a lot when I was campaigning and I talked to a lot of people, they don't want to see raised taxes. And I made commitments that I would do everything I could to, if not lower taxes, to at least hold taxes. But I think there's something in the middle. I'm in real estate development. I've found in my thirty-plus years of doing that, there's always a solution if people want to try and find it. And so I think the folks, the students and their parents deserve to have better answers than they've had in the past, what's going to happen to us. I don't think this is something that can be decided quickly. I don't. I've seen the pool, I've seen the reports. I think it deserves careful consideration and, and we need to do that and include some of the people that know the most about the programs. So we know what they know and they know a lot about things from our perspective. And they can come back and share that information with you so there's full transparency. So I, I don't think it's, I think Teresa's right, this committee, if it is formed, is not going to be making the final decisions from my perspective. It's basically coming back, it's exploring those options and what the benefits and the burdens and the costs would be and bringing that to that, the board, and then the board has to make that decision. And during that time, these other things can be looked into. I, I think these are parallel paths, frankly. But I don't think it, it would be fair to you to put you back on the back burner again while we consider the great big picture. I think we owe it to you to show that we're serious about tackling this issue that's been put on too long. I, for one, am, and I, and I hope the rest of the board is too. I believe they are.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have anything to say? Not going to pressure anybody if you have any concerns.
I'll just say, I'm, I'm in full support of a committee. I think that'll get it in fast track. I think we're tired of the talk and the runaround, so let's get a committee that, from you and us and everyone together, and we'll move faster.
Just wondering about the parallel path. I'm not sure a committee is the best way to go with the, providing the other information on wilder weight and on, you know, the, the debt situation and the overall financials. But Scott, is that something that the staff can provide so we have that simultaneously?
Yeah, I can get that.
Okay, great.
The one thing I hadn't really heard people talk about was we do have a pool, there are limited swimmers perhaps compared to other teams, but when I was in school, we had to take swimming as part of PE. And I believe at some point this did happen, I think that you had mentioned.
Forty years ago, yes.
So I would like to see if that would be considered. I mean, I know it's not happening now, but why? And I know that would be one way that the pool is utilized more than it is now as far as the number of people who would be using the pool.
Students.
Yes.
You know, another thing that, that I just wanted to bring up, I know the Dunlap Dolphins has offered to pay rent in the past and they have not done this, but have paid for some parts along the way. And I think part of this exploration should be, you know, whether or not the Dunlap Dolphins are willing to pay rent. And I'd like to know also, along with that, you know, what do we do for other clubs? You know, are they using our facilities for free and are we being consistent in our policy? And, you know, what are the actual costs and, and that sort of thing?
I think that information would probably be pretty easy to get together with the help of our athletic director.
We can get that.
All right, then. So if you are interested in serving on a committee to look at the various options for the pool, again, please, board members, please email me and then I will work with Dr. Dearman and we will try and form a committee. Actually, I also believe we need to set some parameters for information and when that should be gathered and presented. But I would think we need the summer to have the committee meet and look at prices and costs and options. And I would say that probably maybe September first might be a lofty goal, I don't know. But we can discuss that once we form the committee.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. The school activity account reports are included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Information regarding the high school random drug testing for the month of April is included in the packet. Are there any questions? The right of school contract for 2019, 2020 school year is included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Information regarding the 2019, 2020 transportation contracts with North Muster Learning Center and St. Ute Catholic School are included in the packet. Are there any questions? Information regarding the risk management plan is included in the packet. Are there any questions?
Yes. Yes, thank you. My question is, after each of these, the positions that are listed in here, it has a percentage that can be attributed, I believe, to the TORT fund. And I was, I was just wondering, by approving this plan, are we approving that all of those positions are going to be attributed to TORT for those amounts?
At those percentages, correct.
At those percentages? Okay. And currently, what do we attribute? Do you know, out of that? Sorry.
Most of them, nothing.
Most of them, nothing? Okay.
The risk management plan was created two, over two years ago, but never implemented.
Okay. So what I'd like to know, and I, I know this is late, I didn't ask this before, so I apologize, but what's going to be the dollar figure that will be taken from TORT to, to cover these? Because obviously that's going to free up room, right, in the education fund?
Correct.
Okay. So in essence, this is, if we didn't take this money from the TORT fund, we would be in a position where we have a much larger TORT fund balance, and I think it's pretty large now, correct?
That is correct. The TORT fund was raised when the risk management plan was created, but it was never implemented, so that fund balance has grown.
And the reason why we, we increased the TORT fund at that time is we were afraid of tax caps being passed. It was going on in the legislature and so we were fearful and we all went to an ISB conference and they recommended that we do that as kind of a precautionary.
As well as probably IMRF and social security.
Right.
Everyone did that. Very common practice.
So, I mean, the only issue here is that if we didn't transfer these costs, it would be an area where we could cut taxes and cut our rate, correct?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. And so, I mean, I generally favor, since we can't raise our tax rate anymore in the education fund, and I understand we're going to have lowering revenues and we obviously don't want to cut programs, I just think we should be aware of, of what's happening there and I just want the new members to realize that, that that's, you know, that is kind of a choice that we're making when we do that. And, you know, it's, it's probably the right choice because we want to preserve, you know, the education fund for all that we need it for and that's our major fund. But, but that is, you know, that is.
Well, the concern is if you don't do that, eighty-eighty-five percent of our expenditures come out of the Ed Fund. And as we talked about and showed earlier, with declining EAV and increasing expenditures, we need to tighten the belt.
I know.
And in reality, when you go to tighten the belt, our biggest cost is people. So if we don't free up money in the Ed Fund, then you're looking at potentially people. When I say people, we're looking at staff.
No, I know.
So this is, is a way to, to keep staffing at current levels and provide programs at current levels.
Right. So I'd just like, before we have it as an action item, to just know kind of what that amount is that we're transferring.
That's an easy figure.
Okay.
If I had known, I would have provided.
No, I know. I'm sorry, I didn't catch it till today, but thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Oh, I had one more question. Is that always the assistant superintendent who manages that plan?
In, it depends on the district.
Depends, okay, okay.
But in a larger district, very common, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Information regarding prevailing wage resolution for FY twenty is included in the packet. Are there any questions? Information regarding wage guidelines for COTA and BTA is included in the packet. Are there any questions? Information regarding the destruction of closed session audio is included in the packet. Are there any questions? The next item of discussion regarding the board retreat, which will take place, is the next item of discussion, it's going to be taking place in July. I know we had discussed this previously and I think it's really important for our board to participate in the board retreat discussion. Prior to that, I would, I would really, I know several of you might have different ideas of what we need to cover in that particular training, and I'll be happy to entertain those comments. But I would like to ask, I spoke to Carrie today and she said that she spoke to the policy service that we had utilized and we should be getting the updated policy manuals very soon, by Friday, is that correct? So I would like to suggest, not just to our new members, but also, it's a good refresher for the rest of us, to really take a look at Section Two about board governance, board roles, email use, Closed Meetings Act, agenda items, Section Two, two-point, two-two-oh, removal of items from the consent agenda. I think that will just give especially our new members an idea of how the board process works, how they would put an item on the agenda if it's something they'd like to discuss. So that's probably the most helpful part of the policy manual to you at this time. And I think Teresa would agree, it was a long process when she went through it and when we went through it to update the policy manual, it took several days to do. So while you do want to be familiar with the policies, I think starting with Section Two would probably be the first place or the best place to start, so, just a suggestion. Would anyone like to discuss items they would like to have covered at the board training retreat?
I think it came up previously and I think Dr. Dearman mentioned the art of school boarding as maybe part of the retreat or as a, a board study. We did that before. So I'm not sure where he was thinking about that fitting in. I think Rhetha Owens, our regional representative, has really guided us in the past when we've had the retreats and set the agenda and did a phenomenal job. I remember the last time the board was, way back, four years ago. And what they had for their agenda really, I think, created a lot of team collaboration and, and brainstorming. And so if she has something like that, again, maybe she could provide suggestions on, because she's been doing for years, what, what a most engaging agenda is and follow her lead on that.
Anyone else?
I particularly liked one of the retreats, I don't know if it was the same one, but we did a brainstorming on what we thought should be the top priorities for the district. And even though we came up with way too many, it was a great exercise because it really made you think about priorities. And I guess this time, maybe we should have a limit on, on the to-do list that we have from it. But just having that discussion and getting to know what people's priorities are, I thought was a great, a great discussion.
Thank you. If, if no one else has anything to contribute, I think those are both very good suggestions. Dr. Dearman, did you have anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Mike has something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have a question. I've never been on one. Are these like outward bound? Do we do any whitewater rafting or?
No.
If only.
Hiking the Appalachian Trail, anything like that?
That'd be really nice. Well, actually, years ago, the superintendent did do things like that, Dr. Collier. However, the state has changed the law that your board training has to be provided by a board training specialist provider. So we just can't meet in a room and decide to do those kind of things, although it would be kind of fun.
All right.
They do a very nice job, have many years of experience with them and look forward to that training. I think there's not anyone in this world deny that we could all use a little refresher and some bonding and training and so, looking forward to that myself.
And what's good is, isn't it free?
With the policy.
Yeah.
But if we decide that we could use a little bit more help in training. It never hurts to spend the dollars to do that because I, I think it's a very healthy thing for a board to do, so.
And I haven't read section, or all of Section Two in detail, but Robert's Rules of Order, I believe we follow that.
Well, we try to.
We try to, to understand the procedure, the policy, when we're supposed to contact, if we want to add something to the agenda, when it's appropriate to speak up and not. I think it may be helpful unless somebody really understands it.
I think you're right. Robert's Rules is a pretty strict, and it is suggested that we use it as a strict practice or process. We don't always follow Robert's Rules to the T. Typically, before you speak out, you have to be acknowledged by the chair and there are some other rules. Sometimes we go a little bit more casual in that regard, but I think that's something else we could work on, so.
That's a good idea.
If no one else has anything to say, I'd like to move on to the consent agenda. If no one else has anything to say, I'd like to move on to, um, the consent agenda. Are there any questions or discussion regarding the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Karen? Okay, the board will now move on to action items.
We have to go down.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is something I do all the time and I apologize. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Disharun?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Bluth?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Holzhouser?
Aye.
Humble's?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Motion carried. The board will now move on to the action item. The bill list, treasuries report and district investment, investment report are included in the board packet, are there any questions? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills?
I move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of three million, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars and six hundred and seventy-one and sixteen cents as presented.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Anne was the second. Did you write? He was just asking who. He was just asking who.
Oh, okay.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Blue?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Holzhouser?
Aye.
Humble's?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Motion carried. Information regarding EvaluWise contract is included in the packet, are there any questions? Could I have a motion to approve the contract?
I move to approve the, uh, contract with EvaluWise as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Henry?
Aye.
Holzhouser?
Aye.
Bluth?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Humble's?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Motion carried. Information regarding summer project bids for phase one of Dunlap High School painting is included in the packet, are there any questions? Could I please have a motion to approve the bid?
I move to approve the bid with Dragoo Painting in the amount of seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars for painting at Dunlap High School as presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Holzhouser?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Bluth?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Humble's?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Motion carried. Information regarding summer project bids for milling, blacktop and striping at the Dunlap Valley Middle School is included in the packet, are there any questions? May I please have a motion to approve the bid?
Move to approve the bid with United Contractors Midwest in the amount of eighty-three thousand six hundred and forty dollars and forty-nine cents for milling, blacktop and strike, striping at Dunlap Valley Middle School as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Bluth?
Aye.
Humble's?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Holzhouser?
Aye.
Motion carried. Information regarding the summer project bids for chile replacement at Ridgeview Elementary Schools included in the packet, are there any questions?
I move to approve the bid with O'Brien Brothers in the amount of eighty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars for chile replacement at Ridgeview Elementary Schools presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Bluth?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Holzhouser?
Aye.
Humble's?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Motion carried. This concludes the action item portion of the meeting. Could I have a motion to adjourn to closed session, please?
I move to adjourn to closed session for the following purposes as stated in the Open Meetings Act. The appointment, employment, compensation and performance of specific employees, student disciplinary cases, collective negotiating matters, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed, security procedures, the purchase or lease of real property and litigation.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Henry?
Aye.
Wagenbach?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Bluth?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Holzhouser?
Aye.
Humble's?